Footnote them, or put an asterisk by them and it'll say that this is in the ARP fund. And we've switched all of the one-time purchases to the ARP fund that we could. Sheriff's Department has some pretty good lines that I wanted to switch over, but they ended up being for things like software and software licenses, those kinds of things that don't qualify. So, we weren't able to move them, but we moved what we could. And that's working with Steve and Cassandra at Sheriff's Department. So, most one-time capital requests, I've taken out of the various budgets, but they are in ARP that we'll go over in just a few minutes. Well, we can now, if you look on page 100 of your budget, most of the new stuff is in the ARP. Now, at our next meeting, I will bring to you the updated, remember the buckets that you all approved, that's the plan for the ARP? We've not updated it lately, and so I've updated it and it will include what's in this budget. So, you'll be getting those buckets and you can see it really better with the buckets. But, this budget year completes the $20,999,100 that we received from the federal government. It completes that bucket, or those buckets that you've seen in the past, and it adds a bucket called the interest bucket. And we're starting to work down on the interest bucket. We're only using interest, we know it to be as of June the 30th of this year. And if we work it right, there will still continue to be interest throughout this next budget year. But, that's not budgeted. But, we are working on the interest budget. So, the original $20,999,000, $21 million that we got from federal government, is all been committed. And Mylan will remind, Commissioner Blake will remind you that we have to have it ARP money committed by September, I believe, of '24. It's all committed in this budget. It doesn't have to be spent by September of '24, but it has to be committed. And even though some of you are getting antsy about a couple of those buckets not being spent yet, broadband, for example, the good thing about that is, of course, we wish it was spent because more people would have broadband. But, the other side of the coin is, that $4 million is in the bank drawing interest. So, it's helping this new bucket that we've created. And it's, we brought in probably from memory, I'll have to look at the budget. Well, if you look in the, in the revenue part of the ARP, 128 fund, what page? If you look in the revenue page of the ARP, you know, and an interesting thing while I'm looking for that, is can any of you tell me where other local governments in our area, any of them, have spent their ARP? When you see these buckets, you will have every item that you all have spent in ARP. The federal government ought to be very proud of Bradley County, not only the way we spend it, but the fact, you talk about being transparent, you hear that term all the time. We have a list of everything that's been spent out of ARP, and what's going to be spent this next year. It's not only in the budget, but in those buckets that I refer to, you can pull out the revised plan when you get the latest version, and it will tell you everything that has been spent with ARP money. That's unreal, because you, you don't hear where others are spending their ARP. I'm telling you, you can't give me an example of where anybody else is spending ARP. But, you know to the penny, well, not to the penny, because we may have $20 budgeted and it ends up being 19. But, you, you know with a pretty good number, where we're spending all of those dollars that came in with ARP.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, but if you're looking for how much we've made in interest, we have a report on that. I asked Lori to send it out there, but I have to do that already. That's what we're doing.
Well, I, I wanted them to see it here. Of course, they'll fledge with reports. But, on page 102, revenue from investment. We got $500,000 last year. This year, we'd budgeted to get 150, and it's more like 800. And we're budgeting 400 for next year. Those are just estimates that are done a couple of months ago, but they're pretty close. So, the point is, this year, we're roughly making a million dollars on interest. So, the fact that, what I was referring to earlier, even though we want to have the broadband on the streets and people being able to have broadband, it's committed, it's in the bank, it's drawing interest, which that interest is creating another bucket that we have to buy lots of things with. And you'll see that later on in this budget. But, that page 102 shows the revenue that's come in. The 500,000 is audited number, the 800,000 estimated this year is probably going to be more like 8-something. And then, we put a conservative 400 in there next year, because as we spend more and more, that, that amount's going to be going down. And if you go on through the budget, page 103, there's nothing on 103, because that's where we did the bonuses, the original year. I'll come back to this one in a minute, Adam. But, you go on through the ARP budget. Some upgrades to the windows of Dooley Street's in there. Cannery information, they're asking, the UT extension was asking for money to replace, I think, the boilers in the cannery next year. They said they thought we could get through another year, but next year. That money's in ARP. Commander vehicle for the ambulance service is in ARP. And I can go down all those various lines. But, almost everything that's in a particular budget, you might be interested in, if it was taken out, like the 700 lines and so forth in that budget. If it's deleted, it should be footnoted, but it's in the ARP budget. And then, because of all that interest, this budget shows, I, go back to 102, it shows a projected fund balance of $800,000, I believe. So, well, we're starting on the interest bucket, but if we work it right, and what, I want you to know my motives. If we work it right, we're funding almost all of the capital items out of this year's request in ARP. And if we work it right, we'll continue to have that interest coming in. Well, we'll have a decent ARP budget again next year, even though the ARP money's all committed, because of the interest we're making on it. Does that make sense to you? That, I just want you to know, that's what our goal is, because that's helped us out tremendously with the capital projects. Enough on ARP unless you have a question. Go down to ARP. I haven't gotten the updated version done, but if you remember, here's how we spend it. $7 million for essential worker premium pay. One, little over $1 million for sewer. $4 million for broadband. 1.1 million for public water. 1.1 million for affordable housing. And 6.7 million in what I call county's discretion. And then, starting on the interest bucket, to give you an example, it's all in this budget. The EMS commander vehicle, sheriff's vehicles are in ARP, coming out of the interest bucket. City fields in ARP, interest bucket. EMS Dooley windows, road department, we'll talk about that in a minute, but I took a dump truck out of the road department, $200,000 purchase, it's in the ARP. Bradley County fire rescue turnout gear. Election commission flooring. Sheriff's office vests. Planning and engineering equipment upgrades. Juvenile phone system. You know, we've done Justice Center. We're now doing the courthouse. And in this next budget, we'll be doing the juvenile center phone system switch out. Bradley County Sheriff's Office computers. And the additional money that you've already approved for the Community Services Agency, assuming they need it, as well as an ambulance for next year. All of those are coming out of ARP, the interest bucket. And whenever I get that finished up and bring it to you for your approval of the update, it'll make a lot more sense. Moving on, road department. In the road department, like I said, I did take the 200. The only thing I changed in the road department budget, it's balanced. I treat it just like schools. I don't go in there trying to change road departments, the way they want to spend their money, just like I don't schools. But, I did take a truck out of there in their capital projects budget. They got about 10 budgets also. And one of them had a $200,000 truck that I did take out and put in the ARP. The only other thing I did to the road department budget was I added the 3% raises. They've jumbled salaries around so much, I couldn't tell, you know, normally you take a line and you up at 3%, that's your salaries. Well, they've moved salaries around so much, I requested they provide the numbers for the 3% raise, and they did. So, the numbers are in there covering the 3% raise, but they came from the road department. Schools. You've got your hearing a couple of weeks ago, when I wasn't here, on schools. The highlights here is the operations budget, you know, they have, what, four funds? They actually have five funds, but in this booklet that you have in front of you, they have four budgets. And the operations, what I call the operations budget, is a $4 million increase. You total them all together, it's 122 million in the four funds. And that's plus the fifth fund, which is the federal budget. I think at some point, it becomes part of our budget after we're through with it, but it, somehow it gets put in. The auditors didn't want the federal budget to be in our budget proposal. They want it to be in the final budget, if that makes sense. So, there is a fifth one coming, if I'm saying that right. So, enough on schools, no changes were made. Their numbers are exactly because they already had their raises in there. I know there's some discussion about raises, but as far as now in the budget proposal, no numbers have been changed. Debt service. We're paying down our debt by over $7 million this coming year, and this year, we paid it down by over 8 million. Now, we had projected to pay it down by about 6, 8, or something, I'll say. And Finance Committee wanted me to pay off one of the bonds, I think it was the workhouse. And so, we paid it off, and that was another 1.4 million. So, it made that go over 8 million. So, we paid down our debt this year alone, this year we're in, over 8 million dollars. And this budget in front of you pays down next year's by about 7 million. There's no new debt, of course, in the, in the budget. But, the next two bullets are very important. Please understand, expenses in debt service are a million dollars, almost a million dollars, $980,000 more than revenue. Now, a real conservative out there would say, Gary, you didn't present a balanced debt service budget. Your revenues don't match. That's kind of true. We have the fund balance to cover it, don't get me wrong. But, you look at that, when you do the long, when I do the long-range plan, I look at that, and if revenues, if expenses are exceeding revenues in the long-range plan, my fund balance is going down, down, down. So, that's why I plus the next one. You know, I know there's been some talk about, why don't we do that by bonds? How many people have you bought a house this year? You don't go buy a house when interest rates are high, I hope. You don't do bonds when interest rates are high. And you also don't do bonds when your fund balance is dwindling each year. Now, granted, we have a sufficient fund balance, nothing scary there, but it's just not the time to borrow money. Interest rates are high, and revenues don't meet expenses. So, keep that in mind. We're good this year, we're good next year according to the long-range plan. But, I don't do it, I'm looking three and four years out with things like debt service. So, I'm not ever going to propose something that's going to cause a problem two and three years from now. So, anyway, revenues are a little behind on the expenses there. But, there is a time in the future that that will change. But, it's not this year or next year. So, there will be a time, I know y'all start getting questions about that. But, keep in mind, we have a level, it's sort of like an equal monthly payment plan on your utility bill. We set up bonds to be like that. So, they're fairly level. Now, granted, it's going up a little bit this year, but they're fairly level. So, just because a bond gets paid off, don't mean it drops. Because we have them set up where that when one drops off, another one kicks in and starts paying more, if that makes sense. So, that way, we have a fairly level funding of those bonds. It makes it a lot better to budget, but it makes it hard to explain to people, well, if we're paying off bond number 22 in September of '25, why don't our debt service drop? And that's because that was taken into consideration when we did the last bonds or something. So, just please understand, level fund, level, level plan, it's just like the, like your utility bill. You're paying pretty much the same amount every month, even though your utility bill's not the same every month, but you're filling in those gaps. 172 fund. Page 151, this pays extra, this one is due by the end of this month. I think if you'll look in the budget, I'll tell you from memory, but if you look in the budget, we've got 450 budgeted, and I think the bill I got from our trustee was 3-something. So, we're paying more than we have to on that debt. That's been our goal from the beginning, to pay everything we can. Sort of like paying extra on your house payment. You know, your payments, $1,000, but you pay 1,200. So, we're doing that, and this next year's budget, it's budgeted the same way. We'll pay an extra amount next year. So, we're getting that one down. I think that is for the, well, 172 fund, that would be for the industrial park. So, we're paying extra on that particular bond this year, and we're budgeting to pay extra on it again next year. 189 fund. Page 152 through 155. This does include the Phase 1 of the Hopewell project that you all approved. 4.2 million. And the long-range plan shows exactly like Dr. Cash and Susan and the people at the schools talked to me about how they would need their funding. One of those years, they may have to cash flow it till December, January, when our taxes come in. But, like this year, it's there. I think next year's amount is there. And then, I believe it's the third year where they may have to do a little bit of cash flow. But, that's nothing to concern you all, that's between schools and me. But, because the long-range plan does fund the $15 million project over four years. And I hope you all agree, but this is the kind of thing you need to be bragging about. You voted to do a $15 million school project at Hopewell. I'm not defending the project, I'm just saying, you have voted to do a $15 million school project at Hopewell, and we are set up to pay cash for it over a four-year phase. Three phases, four budgets. That's great. That's something you should be bragging about. It's something I'm going to brag about, I can tell you. We've been saving to do it, and in doing it over this phased-in thing with schools, we will have paid whenever that Hopewell project is finished, four years from now. It'll be paid with cash, no bonds. And that's how we ought to always try to do, and that's how this one is working. So, again, I think you should be proud of that. I'll total the next one, 18 funds in front of you, totaling 210 million. Now, the important thing to me is this, and you hear it every year, I know, but you have the prerogative to make changes, and that's fine. You know, ask questions, get your information, and make changes. But, please, if you add $10 here, take it from somewhere. Please do not lower the fund balances. Especially in general fund, especially in fire, or in debt. Don't lower the fund balances. What I worked toward this time was getting the raises in there and getting everything that we possibly could fund, that people were asking for, and maintaining my fund balance. 25 is always my goal, and usually I end up at 20, or somewhere around there. And this one is just a little over 20% in the general fund. So, do not, please do not lower the fund balance. It just causes you problems next year, and the next year. And if it gets, there was a time several years ago that we didn't do that, and we actually had to borrow money to do payroll. Wasn't something I was proud of. But, if you lower the fund balance, I got to do it, and I'm going to say, yeah, here's why I'm doing it. But, we've got to keep that amount in the fund balance in order to meet the payroll every two weeks for five months with no revenue coming in. So, that's the bare minimum. So, please, do not lower the fund balance. And then, of course, I conclude with this next slide. Some don't like to see this, but this is probably the most important thing of all of the slides. What does this do for the taxpayers? It does not increase their taxes, it does not create any new taxes, and I'm not proposing any increase in fees. It's my 24th budget with no tax increase. And I don't care if you like it or not, I'm going to brag the hell phrases over. 24th budget with no tax increase. I'm proud of that. It's on behalf of the taxpayers, but again, I hope everyone's proud of that. A budget with no tax increase that meets all of the things that we need to do. It continues to provide the level of service that our citizens not only expect, but deserve. So, we're meeting all of those things, and we're not raising taxes. And I'll defend it to that person that says, you can't live on the same nickel from now on. That person don't know what a nickel is. We're not living on the same nickel. We're growing our community numerically and in value. Didn't bring it with me, Mylan, but the value of the penny has grown. And we will continue to grow the value of that penny. And that's how we balance the budgets, keeping expenses in line, but growing the value of the penny and not raising taxes. So, I'm proud of that, and I hope you are too. Any questions, probably not tonight, but you're welcome to if you have them.
Anyone have any question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not so much a question, but the touch on that piece of the downstream effects of why we asked to pay off the workhouse loan. Remember, those are inter-fund loans. In other words, the loan didn't come from like a traditional bank. It came from the trustee's office, the principal, or the, from the cell of the hospital. So, when we paid that off, the trustee was able to take that money that we paid off from whatever fund it came out of, and was able to purchase a CD for about a point more, and then bring in more interest back into HCI. So, in a sense, all we did was pay off that, and you'll see that that's a zero on the expense side. And then, you'll see more revenue on the HCI when you look at Fund 192. 192, when we do grants this year, should be a pretty good process because of that, the interest rates overall and the principal. That was, that was the whole reason why we did that. It turned out to be a good thing, and if we can, if it makes sense to understand the constraints of 151 and 199. There's still the ESG loan out there, that's the inter-fund loan. 172 is paying for stream grants. But, if we can do that, I think it'll benefit the same way paying off the workhouse did. But, I just want to elaborate, all we did with that was pay ourselves back into 192. Thank you.
And as interest rates have risen, they're making good money on the HCI fund anyway now. So, it doesn't, they don't need the help like they did back when we first did it. And from my perspective, I'm, I'm having to negotiate with our trustee as I speak on, on the latest one. But, we're paying as much or more than we are on our regular bonds because of these. So, I would love to pay them all off, is would be the end result. But, at least we got one paid off, and the other, and the second one, we're paying down quicker than was expected. I think they were 15 years originally. All right, any other questions on the budget? Yes, ma'am.
Can we have a copy of your comments?
Proposal, yeah.
Thank you.
Adam, if you want to, Lori's got it, so, yeah. I thought that was, that was the plan, but I wasn't sure. Okay, switch subjects if you don't have any other questions. Now, I know there's going to be questions, and anytime you have one, usually it'll be, hopefully, an easy explanation as to why this or that. But, you're welcome to call me or whatever, and I know Finance will do the same thing to me Thursday morning. But, don't wait till Thursday. If you have a question that hopefully I can answer or get the answer for, I'll try to do that. Okay? Changing subject, if, if there's nothing else on the budget tonight. Keep in mind that this goes to Finance now. Those of you that are not on Finance, Finance meets Thursday. They will make or not make changes Thursday. Then, it will come back to you all as the Finance's recommendation. Takes three votes to change it Thursday, takes eight votes to change it after it comes back to you all. And then, after it comes to you all, and you've had the opportunity to make your changes, then it goes to the newspaper. So, that's sort of what's left to be done here. Sir? Appeals are in there before the Commission has, there'll be appeals, I think, on the 10th. And then, you come back on the 17th, that's your last chance to change it. I've got to have it in the newspaper the next day. If there's any major changes, I've got a problem. But, hopefully, there won't be any major changes at that point. It goes to the newspaper, and it's got to be in there 10 days. And then, you come back this year on the 28th, instead of the, what's that first Monday? I don't even remember the date. First, I believe. Instead of coming July the 1st, you'll come June the 28th. And then, we can check off the box saying that our budget was approved before June the 30th. That's a big plus. Hamilton County, for example, they got their budget last, within the last few days. And they vote on the 25th, we're voting on the 28th. So, we're almost in line with Hamilton County there. Except they got some controversies down there. All right, you have a picture in front of you I wanted to mention. Along with this right here, if the banner will print this and put it on whatever. You see that picture in front of you? I'm not going to go in detail of who's doing what, but sometimes decisions do have ramifications. And this is a ramification of a decision that you all made last week, I assume. I tried talking to the person and was hung up on. But, anyway, we take electronics at Peerless Road. They're put in a tractor-trailer. When it's full, they come and get the tractor, the trailer, and swap it out and leave us an empty one. This time, they came to get the trailer, and they paid three guys about a half a day to unload it into our parking lot. What you have is a picture of a tractor-trailer load of electronics in the parking lot at Peerless Road. Why do I bring this to you? This is an example of the crap sometimes we have to deal with. But, I bring it to you, see if you've got any ideas, you know, of any recycling companies? It was hard to find the one I had, and so finding another one's not going to be easy. In the meantime, do you have any suggestions on how I get rid of this stuff out of the parking lot? And what am I going to do with it? I assume I'm going to have to pay somebody to load it up, haul it to the landfill, and pay the landfill it. But, before I do any of that, I want to make sure that you 14 don't have a better suggestion. Yes, ma'am?
So, what do you mean, this was as a result of a decision we made last week?
I could only assume that, because, like I said, the phone calls of the person, I couldn't talk to him. But, that person was involved in that, when we came to you, asked for the proceed with legal proceedings, and you didn't approve doing it. That person I know is upset, and this happened a few days later, so. He's probably watching, I didn't use any names. Although, it's a mess. And it's not going to be an easy fix. So, again, if you have any suggestions, what do I do with it? It's, there's, you know, that's a tractor-trailer load, there's probably 10 pickup trucks. Think about it and let me know, because I can't leave it there. I have put up signs like the one I held up, saying no longer taking electronics. Hopefully, we'll be able to take them again in the future, because in order to have that second household hazardous waste that the state paid for in the spring, I believe it was, was it the spring? Anyway, the last one we had, the state paid for it. They won't pay for it if you don't do electronics recycling. So, we've got to find an electronics recycler. Plus, you can look at all the stuff there. People in Bradley County do recycle electronics. You wouldn't have thought they did that many, but they do, a lot. Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Thompson?
I don't know, maybe. What scrapyard you got in mind? It would have to be somebody other than that one, because that's the one that unloaded the truck. Nope, don't to me either. I'm just sharing with you. And again, when I made the call to see what was going on, my attorney has advised me not to talk to you. Goodbye. So, that's why I don't know any more than I know, and probably said more than I should. But. No, my attorney didn't tell me to talk. I told her after that, I said, if she'd told me not to talk to him, I'd told her to get lost. But, anyway, it's a problem. I'm not making overdoing, it is a problem that the owner of that truck that was taking our recyclable things is the one that unloaded it, and yes. You figure it out. Like I said, I'm figuring, I'm being watched, so I'm not going to use any names. Yes, sir, Tom, Mr. Lefferts?
Is there any regulations? Can, can you not do an open top and, and take it to the landfill? Or, is there regulations saying you can't take it to the landfill?
No, that could be landfill.
We have an open top with, at the hospital with all kinds of this stuff in it right now as we speak. I mean, I'm talking-
What do you do with it?
Take it to the landfill.
See, they should be recycling electronics, they shouldn't be taking it to the landfill.
Not all of, I mean, some of these are floppy disks.
I hate to do it, but we probably will have to do that. But, again, I, I've got a cost of labor of loading it. It took three guys a half a day, so it's going to, there's the cost of labor of loading it. There's the cost of the truck to haul it, and then there's the cost of the landfill. None of that's in my budget.
Well, and now, let me clarify, our, at the hospital, it is not probably 5% electronics. Rest of it's just desks and chairs and old Turner. I mean, we got all kinds of different things that they're throwing away.
First of all, that we're no longer taking it. Hopefully, that's temporary, but they'll be upset. But, in the meantime, here's what's also going to happen. They're going to go by and add to that pile every day. That's why I got to get rid of the pile. They're just going to go by and do it anyway. That's just the nature of people, they feel like they're recycling, and they're going to recycle. But, right now, today, I don't have a recycling company to take electronics- But right now, today, I don't have a recycling company to take electronics. Now, they are out there. I'll have to find them. But in the meantime, this is what we have. Other questions or comments? Got one other subject and then I'll be through. Do what? And I don't know how many pickup loads are there, but I'm telling you that trailer was, that tractor-trailer was full. It was ready to be picked up, but instead of picking it up, they unloaded it. Unloaded it and my understanding is the brakes were locked down on the trailer. So, they had backed the truck up to it to take it off. And when they went to take it off, I was told that the brakes were locked up and they couldn't take it. So, it's still sitting there. But anyway.
So, was the person that owned this truck, was he the one wanting the old power line thing to stop?
It's my assumption, yes, sir. I'm sure that these people down here are going to tell me I've said something that I shouldn't. But same time, this is a very aggravating thing. It really is. Usually, you don't even know about these things. But this one's beyond my pay grade. I don't know what to do with a tractor-trailer load of electronics and don't have the budget to do anything with it, to tell you the truth. So, I thought I'm just going to bring it to your and the public's attention and whatever you decide you want me to do, we'll do it. Okay? All right. One other subject. Adam has a report to give you about broadband. I'd like to ask him to do that at this time.
It's not so much of a report as it is an announcement. We have been working on a grant that at the end of the grant and at the end of the project, we will have a long-term connectivity plan for Bradley County when it comes to broadband expansion. Two weeks from tonight, as a part of the grant process and the study that we're doing, we are hosting in this room at 6:00 PM a community meeting, open to the community on the subject of broadband. We've invited several of the ISPs and are hopeful that they will attend. I've only gotten confirmation from VEC in Twin Lakes. The purpose of the meeting, they will be on hand, number one, to discuss what their current plans are as well as future plans. There will be an update on what little we know right now about future funding from the state and from the federal government. There will also be an opportunity for questions and input from the public. We will be gathering some data as well as walking people through the process of doing speed tests at their home. That is also data that we will be gathering as a part of this study. And so, we are, again, Monday night, June 17th, 6:00 PM in this room for about an hour, hour and a half. We've invited the ISPs, several other stakeholders in the community. Of course, you all are invited as well. I would encourage you to come. As most of you who've recently run, you know that broadband is still one of the high topics of discussion, especially outside the city limits in your district. And so, I would invite you to come and also listen and participate. We also expect that several of our state legislators will be here as well to be able to field questions and concerns to the state level. So, I just wanted to make that announcement as well as that invitation. We will be putting it out on social media, on the website and through the media as well over the next couple of weeks.
Any questions of Adam?
Hey, Lori, will you add that to our calendar? Please.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone have any questions, comments to the mayor? All right. We'll now go, we'll now go to the consent agenda. Like to entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Have a second, second. Okay. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Offord?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
It's 13 in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now go to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report tonight other than EMS committee on June 5th, this Wednesday at 10:00 AM here in the courthouse.
Thank you. Commissioner Leffert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All is good in the 6th district and I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason?
All's well in the 6th.
Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Goins?
5th district's doing well.
Commissioner Thompson?
You weren't listening, Commissioner. I called him. He said, "My attorney has advised me not to talk to you, Mayor. Goodbye." So, all I know is what I have in that picture.
Commissioner Gilbert?
4th district's doing-
Commissioner Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To follow up that question, I thought what we decided was this recycle situation would go back to planning and we did not deny recycling being done there.
You just delayed it, really. You didn't kill it, but-
See, we assumed it was a junkyard. And when we realized that it was a recyclable center, then we said, if it's acceptable for that area, it goes back to planning, comes back to us. I don't, I don't know what we did that would incite this kind of stuff. It seems to me like this is a local situation between the individuals there. This is something that's got to be dealt with. And whatever that bill is, if this continues there, then maybe we should turn that bill over to the individual that's- But I don't, I don't really understand this. 7th district's doing well. The 60 Highway's moving forward as it moves forward. There is, there, and this spills over to this 1st district as well as my district. Hopewell School, the corner of Hopewell School will be closed this week, the rest of this week. For you that travel through there, you cannot get through that intersection of 60 Highway and Freewill Road. You'll have to go around either Villa Drive and go to Freewill and come around to Hopewell School if you're needing to be there, because they're working on the road exactly right there in that intersection. So, that's going to be for you that need to travel through there. Look how you can get around that. And I think you know the roads better than I do through there. But that's going to be the rest of this week and some of you've had to deal with that. So, just a heads up, I think that's been in the paper. I think that's been, tried to share as much as could be shared there. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think, make a comment on this junk over here. Two people, any two people can have a different definition of the word junk if you're dealing with used automobiles or the other term that we've used. It's a matter of play on words here more than anything else, I think. Commissioner Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance committee will meet Thursday at 9:00 AM here in the commission room to review the budget proposal. So, thank you.
Commissioner Offord?
2nd district's doing well.
Commissioner Beatty?
1st district's doing well, too.
Thank you. We'll now move on down to the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Winters? Commissioner Beatty? I mean, Slater, I'm sorry. Will be the second. Agenda item A, Commissioner Blake?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I should have said this ago. I need to move this item to the June 28th voting session. County attorney needs a little bit more time to review that, so that's not a problem. Doesn't go into effect until July 1st anyway, so it's no problem. I'd like to move that to the June 28th voting session.
There's a problem on my part. I didn't call for a vote. So.
I was waiting.
You?
So, I'm rolling my item A to June 28th.
Okay. Now, do we have a, I took a first and a second on the agenda. Do I have a-
That's good with both of you for that. Yeah, okay. Okay, we're good.
A would come off, okay. All right. Agenda item B?
We got to call the roll, though.
Call the roll. That's what I thought, right?
Okay. Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Offord?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
It's 13 in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Agenda item A has been pulled. We'll go to agenda item B, Commissioner Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm carrying the Water for Commissioner Hughes, who's not here tonight. This is resolution authorizing the Bradley County mayor to enter into annexation inter-local agreement between the City of Cleveland and Bradley County regarding the non-contiguous annexation of approximately 17 and a half acres of property on Buchanan Road. It's currently owned by Ryan and Emily Wampler and further identified as tax map 065, parcel 040 and 044 on pages 7-20. Put this in the form of a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Slater, on the second, open for discussion. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just a couple of questions for the esteemed counselor here. When they enact inter-local stuff, does the people that they enter, they take in at that time start paying the city taxes?
Yes, they definitely do.
And I thought I read in that resolution that it went to eight years before they had to get all their utilities finished. I thought it used to be seven.
There's not any magic amount in the law about how long you have. I think it reads that it's a reasonable amount of time. I do think there's some case law on that that says that seven years is reasonable, so.
So, would you have any idea why they moved it up to eight?
I don't. I do know that whatever you put in the plan of services, you do have to comply with. So, I don't know. That would be a question for the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else? End of discussion. Call the roll, please.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Oh.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Offord?
No.
Cry?
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote? That's 10 in favor, three opposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now go to communication from the audience. I'll recognize and allow five minutes to anyone that wishes to speak. Please.
Deborah Gleason, 4th district. This is a comment on the electronics that you're trying to dispose of. And maybe you already are aware of this, but isn't there a recycling one on Pierless Road that recycles electronics?
That's where this is.
This is, this is where it was unloaded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll share a photo with you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Chairman?
Yes.
Mayor, whose transfer truck is that sitting there?